I would like to call the meeting for the Peoria Public School District 150 Board of Education for August 24th, 2015 to order. Would you please call the roll?
President.
Mrs. Kostic.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Here.
Mr. Adler.
Here.
Mrs. Butler.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here. Please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again tonight, we are excited to keep our agenda, and keep on our agenda, an important placeholder that is now going to be a regular recognition at each board meeting. As a district, we have a lot of volunteers and contributors that give us a lot of their time, effort, and expertise to help us, our students and our staff, with various needs. As we often say, it takes a village to raise a child. The Community Contribution Award is just as much of an opportunity for our community to learn about the resources that exist for our families as it is to recognize the individuals or groups that will be on each board agenda. Tonight, our recognition goes to the Dream Center of Peoria, and Mr. Matt Lawson is the Executive Director.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Thanks very much. How's everybody doing?
Yeah.
All right, good. We are extraordinarily proud of our relationship and partnership with District 150. We've had Backpacks been going on now for quite a while, and our partnership's, I think, it's its fourth year, fifth year. And it's a one-day event. How many of you have been to Backpack Peoria? Have you seen it? Okay, awesome. Yeah, cool. So, an extraordinary event. It's evidenced in, again, the depth of our partnership. The fact that every principal from District 150 is present is awesome. It shows a resolve of us as working in this community to make an impact together. Backpack Peoria is one example of one of the outreaches we do in community. We also have youth services, so an after-school program, Project 309, where kids come after school, and we give them a safe place to hang out, connect with their friends, and get mentoring and tutoring. And then we also meet basic needs. We have a homeless shelter in the Dream Center, and if you guys knew that or not, we also have transitional housing. So some of the kids in our program actually live at the Dream Center. And things like this allow them the opportunity to get a leg up. You know, they're already dealing with a lot of things going on in their life, so we're trying to remove some of those obstacles. Backpack's one of those things. We also have future development. This is one thing I'm really excited about as we start working closely with District 150, trying to provide opportunities for careers for kids. We have a program, Cloud Consulting, where kids are learning cloud-based consulting on the Salesforce platform. Go Google it later, I'm not going to go into detail on what that is, Salesforce. This is a real career. Starting salary in this field for a basic administrator, sixty grand. We've got kids who started in our program in our homeless shelter at age 12, and in our transitional housing, who've been doing it for two years now, they're 14, they're getting ready to start an internship with the Salvation Army, helping them build out. This is real money, right? Real life change. And we're going to be working with District 150 to help make that happen, also some of the trades as well. So again, super proud of our relationship with you guys. Thanks for your support, and you're continuing to come out to Backpack. If you guys ever want to come down for a tour, if you haven't had one, we would love to show you around. And again, we are so grateful. Thanks for recognizing the work we're doing. It takes, you know, we have a lot of volunteers, so it's, sometimes it feels kind of silly to say, hey, thanks for giving me recognition. We have hundreds of people that really helped Backpack be the success that it is, Mission Peoria, that kind of leads into that. We have 300 high school kids from all over the country that come to serve our community, which is pretty cool. I had an awesome cleanup day the day before Backpack, but again, very appreciative and grateful for your involvement, and we look forward to the years to come. Thanks so much.
And Ms. Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. As you can see, Dr. Krad is coming toward you to give you a token of our appreciation for the students and family of District 150. Thank you.
Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Mr. Adler?
Thank you, Mrs. Ross. It's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Gallo and members of the Sterling Middle School Leadership Team here tonight. I'd like to invite them to a podium and give us a little bit of a kickoff for this upcoming parent university.
Thursday night, our doors are opening at Sterling Middle School for Parent University, where we'll be showcasing numerous family activities for our parents who will be attending, as well as our staff will be present, and other staff members from the district who will be presenting on numerous topics of awesome things, including PBIS, Avid, our IB program, as well as our Garden Club, and our Deaf Heart of Hearing program. So all of you are welcome, we would like to see all of you there. We hope all of our board members can make it as well. There should be letters in front of you tonight from our students, and we have a short video for you as well.
Do you know which one it was? Okay, sorry.
Good evening, Buenos Aires. Good evening, Buenos Aires. Fortunately invited to be a partner at our education at Sterling Middle School, IB World School. Please join us for a gathering and information building at every university, both Sterling and all these places. Our doors will be open at 5:00 PM and then will be closed at 5:50 PM. We will be showcasing all of the wonderful things taking place throughout the way of schools and our community. There will be activities and information for the whole thing. We are excited to open the doors to the community, looking forward to welcoming you to our school. Thank you, Dr. Krad, and the New York Public School Board of Education for giving us this opportunity. See you on Thursday.
Was that all you had?
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 2nd, July 6th, July 14th, July 20th, and July and August 10th, 2015.
Just so you know, I'll be abstaining because I was not present for all of those meetings.
Okay. Let the record show that Ms. Wolfmeyer and Ms. Kostic will be abstaining. Could I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boy.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
I would like to ask Mrs. Kostic.
Okay, thank you. We are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria District 150 schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights for free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personnel concern, personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We realize that three minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box, which is on your right over there, the red box, for your convenience. The Board Secretary will collect those comments after each board meeting to compile and share with the board and superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has three minutes, and no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher, without the consent of the majority of the board. And thank you, Mrs. Cruz, for having a comment in the box this past board meeting. First on our agenda is, Mrs. Cruz.
Early in my career, many students were not given the opportunity to be in enriched or AP classes. That inequity has changed over time, but I understand concerns that not enough has yet been done to include all qualified students. However, preparation for these advanced courses begins in kindergarten, not in high school. I am concerned that discipline problems are taking away so much of that preparation time in the lower grades, and the problems continue in high school. And I know you're looking into that. I hope that all of you share my concerns about the noticeable lack of correlation between AP test scores and some semester averages. Of the 597 AP tests taken second semester of last year, only 21 had a score of five. However, 242 of the 597 had an A for a semester course average. Seventy-three passed the test with a four, but 169 had a B semester average. Therefore, only 94 passed the test with a four or a five, but 411 students had A or B semester averages. Of the 119 students who received a qualifying test score of three, 105 received a C average, a correlation that is quite reasonable. The bottom two scores take us back to inexplicable. Of the 597, 126 had a test score of two, and 61 had a D semester average. 258 of 597 had a test score of one, but only 19 students had an F semester average. The volume and depth of AP material have always made course content difficult enough to make only above-average students eligible. I don't think you have a choice but to consider that the large number of semester As and Bs in AP courses indicate that course content might have been watered down and/or grades inflated. Most of these students have graduated. How did these inflated grades and failed AP tests make them college-ready? Now that there is two-way communication between teachers and administrators, I believe that such dialogue will explain this data. I certainly can't. Were teachers told not to give students below a C? The numbers seem to support a possibility of such a directive. Were students comfortable with the pace and difficulty of the courses? How were students chosen for AP classes? Did they have a choice? How do AP scores compare/contrast with AP scores five, 10, 15 years ago? Teachers have always been good judges as to which students have the possibility of passing an AP test. Were they consulted? And I know that I'm giving you this information because I know somebody will look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cruz. Mr. Terry Knapp.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Cruz again for her outstanding document. You all have this before you. It's, you can compare this to all the previous documents that you've done with previous year's AP scores. I doubt that you can compare them because I doubt that it's been done. Not saying that it hasn't, but you need to make a practice out of that in the future. You also need to understand that these test companies are ripping you off, okay? They're ripping the federal government off, they're ripping the state government off. You have the AP test, you have the ACT test, you have the PARC test, and you have the GED test. Companies are producing these, they're lobbying the government to force us, and I think the federal government next year is going to do the AP tests, and it's ridiculous that we're putting this kind of money into these types of things. They don't, they're meaningless because 80% of the kids that are taking these tests don't care. It's like the ACT test. Half of our students have already decided they're not going to college. They're going to go into trades, they're going to do something else, so you need to be aware of that. This reminds me of, you know, the Common Core comments that are being made by the candidates for Republican president. You know, some of them have just come out and said Common Core is worthless. The leading candidates have said Common Core is worthless. I was at this podium two other times when people were in Peoria to talk about Common Core, college professors, and we didn't even send a person, staff person or board member to either one of the meetings. And that's sad. Common Core needs to be suspiciously looked at. We had Edison here. Edison ripped us for $40 million. They brought an IPO to Peoria, many of you probably bought stock in that. And the IPO went from $39 a share down to 14 cents a share before Chris Whittle and Benno Schmidt bought the stock back at 14 cents a sh, well, they actually bought it back at 50 cents a share, after it was $39 a share six weeks earlier. You need to be aware of this type of thing and not get stuck in the quagmire again. Quest, you know, Quest has got 40 seniors, did I read that in the paper this week? They're supposed to have 75. The law says that I'm at Quest and I leave, and Ms. Cruz is on the waiting list, she comes into Quest. There's no wait period. How did, how did this happen? You know, we closed Woodruff with 900 students because they didn't have enough students, Ms. Wolfmeyer, you know, and we had 200 kids in the senior class, and these people have 40? What kind of curriculum are they providing their students? I would be concerned for those students at Quest. I know they like it, they like the half-hour-longer day, that's what they really like, and then they get to go co-op with Peoria Heights and don't have to play with our kids in football. You know, that's amazing. We're going to pay the coaches, we're going to pay the transportation, 20 kids are on a bus every day, back and forth to Peoria Heights. And we're paying that indirectly. I know Quest is paying it, but we're...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
Brianna Keisner?
Yes, I got it right. Can I pronounce your name right, Brianna? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Brianna. I am a parent of a first-grade student at Treewin, and I want to speak on behalf of Ms. Rumba. She is the in-school coordinator, I'm not entirely sure her title. She does so much that she really goes beyond a title, actually. She lost her grant, June 30th, to stay at Treewin, yet she has still been working at Treewin without pay, and she's still been helping organize scholarships for different activities for students this summer. As far as I'm aware of, she has done 21 different clubs this summer alone with none of the parents paying for any of it. She secured scholarships for every single student that has decided they wanted to join a club. And she does more than that. She does all kinds of incentive programs for students at Treewin to make sure that they are doing their best. I've seen her buy students' books because they want to read. I've seen her, like, go out and actually go to libraries and secure books for these students that want to read, because she wants to encourage them. She feeds their potential, she sees it and she feeds it. And it's amazing what she does, really. There's so much that she does. We have, we've had letters pouring in from students, from teachers, from different community members, even from a city councilman, to support her, to try to get her to stay on at Three minutes is obviously not enough for this woman. This woman is amazing, and she has had such a positive effect on the students at Treewin and on the image of Treewin itself. She's taken students out of Treewin to different field trips, such as the Gershwin Play, and she's had so many different principals tell her that her students are amazing, that they're well-behaved, and they did not believe that students from Treewin could actually be that well-behaved. She's putting a positive image out there for District 150 in general. And I think it's important that she stays and she continues to put that positive image out there and that she continues to help these children, because they desperately need it. There are so many children that strive to make her proud of them, and she is, she's proud of every single student that she comes in contact with. That's it.
Thank you so much. Dr. Mandar Patikar?
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Mandar Patikar, I'm a physician in town. I'm also a joint secretary of an organization called Hindu Swamsevak Sangh, which was recently recognized by the school district for the Team Volunteer Award two weeks ago. This award, we have been working with Treewin School for the last three and a half, four years, and all our work would not have been possible without Pam Rumba. We, I know her since four years. There are very few people who would be willing to put themselves out there. She is the bridge. Essentially, I don't want to sound too poetic, but she truly is a bridge which spans the divide, which separates the children of Treewin School from the world of opportunities, acceptance, and ultimate success. Any, when you, when, see, I'm from India. We have brought people who are families of caterpillar executives to come and volunteer at Treewin. When they come, they have, they come with appreciation, like, oh, Treewin School, from what part of the town I'm coming, I'm from where. They come there, they spend an hour, two hours, and they become regular. Every Saturday they show up. This is because she has made us aware of the problems. She has formed bonds with the families in that part of town. They trust her with their kids. They let her take her, the kids to drama practice, and she drops them back there at 11 o'clock at night. How many of us would be willing to let a stranger take their kid, but she is not a stranger? She lives in principle, you know where it is, and she drops kids here and on her own gas, on time, own time, goes back home. Many, many times. And here, I have a, not to be too dramatic, but I have a letter from a child, and so of course I'm going to be saying it verbatim, so pardon any grammatic mistakes. To whom it may concern, Mrs. Rumba plays an important role to students, comma, teachers, and families. She has kept me busy for three years. I got into my first play, Boy Scouts, six camps, et cetera. Honestly, she has put more of an effort on me than many other people in my life. If she didn't do these things, I would be on the streets. What more can I say? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any response to the audience comments?
Thank you for, for the testaments, and I, I've heard of her. I've visited Treewin, and the principal and I talked about it. We will continue to explore the possibility of, see what we can do to get her back in her position. These are the individuals we definitely would like to retain. I need to study more about the grant funding and those sorts of things, but thank you for the testaments. Appreciate it.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
I'd just like to speak to a moment to the AP classes. I want to caution us about correlating the test scores with what grades kids are supposed to get. I never, I never had the impression that if you score a three on the test, you should be getting a C or a four and a B. There are a lot of things that go into that. I had a son who took AP Calc and Physics and got As and Bs all through high school and never scored higher than a three, I don't think, on the test, but number one, he's not a good test taker, and number two, the college he was going to go to didn't give credit for AP classes. He took them because it was a greater challenge and offered more rigor, so he wasn't real concerned about how he did on that test, to be perfectly honest with you. And he went on to college and graduated with a 3.2 grade point average in Physics, so I don't think we're dumbing down the AP tests for, or classes for kids, and I think it's something that needs to be evaluated and looked into and on a regular basis. But I want to caution the correlation between getting a three on the test and getting a C, and then they're getting As and Bs. I think that's very possible for a lot of children, so I just wanted to caution us on that.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Wolfmeyer, but is there room for improvement, Ms. Cruz? Definitely, and so we'll continue to, we appreciate... And so, we'll continue to, we appreciate the research that you've done. It's telling, and we'll put our heads together and work on putting a plan together to improve those numbers.
Yes, I would just say that I don't know if you can characterize any score on an AP test as having failed it. And I took an AP test many, many years ago, and there was never any indication to me that any score on those tests was a failure. Obviously, that's well passed. The other thing is that we do not administer GED tests within this district. Is that correct?
No, we do not.
Okay. So GED tests may be available through some other sources, but we do not administer them here. And I believe the PARCC testing is required by the state of Illinois.
That's correct.
So with that in mind, we're asked to do things sometimes that we have to do and sometimes things that we don't have to do.
Any other comments? Response to the audience? No. We've, on the agenda at information items, and the first one is introduction of the administrative team. Dr. Karat?
Thank you, President Ross. Before I introduce the small, my small and large cabinet team to you, I would actually like to present some other individuals who are here, the coordinators here this evening. If you are, please stand. There should be ten. Can you please stand? Coordinators. The assistant principals, there should be about thirty of you. Please stand and be recognized. And the principals, there should be about twenty-seven principals. Principals, please stand, please. Thank you. So that should be a total of about sixty-seven administrators. And I would like you to, I would like to thank you for coming out this evening, number one. But more importantly, to, again, congratulate you on a great start that you've had and really to let you know that I'm here to support you. And again, thank you for coming out this evening, and let's have a great year, okay? And as effective administrators, you will provide, those people who just stood up, you'll provide meaningful support to your staff, and you will continue to monitor, progress monitor weekly for growth. The administrators, just for the audience, the administrators will conduct walkthroughs and they'll provide feedback. They'll attend professional learning communities in their buildings. They will, they will review lessons and provide feedback to teachers. They will also monitor attendance, behavior, and academics on a weekly basis. So just a quick reminder, we all know, we've studied this, leadership is, because since you're in, we're all in leadership role, leadership is second only to classroom instruction among all the school-related factors that contribute to what students learn at school. So being effective leaders is very, very important. And without powerful leaders, schools are unlikely to turn around. So you're, you know, the pressure is on, right, team? So your success is vital to our district's success, and you're up to the challenge. So again, thank you. So then, speaking of team, tonight, I would like to introduce my team to you. While board members and community individuals have recognized some faces, I want the community to have a chance to put names with faces and also learn a little bit more about what each position does. And I would like you to have an idea of what they're trying to, what we're going to accomplish for this upcoming year. Each individual was asked to identify, we talked a lot about SMART goals and SMART meaning specifically, specific, meaningful, measurable, attainable, realistic goals. So each one has identified about five SMART goals that they're going to focus on and accomplish for the year. So I, we have two groups. I have two groups that I meet with on a regular basis, and one is called the Small Cabinet Group. And we meet, we meet weekly, every Fridays. And then there is a larger group. It's called the Strategic Forum Group. And the Small Cabinet Group, actually, the one that facilitates that group, I lead that group. And then the larger group, Ms. Susan Gershnic and Mr. Mark Wilcoxen, they facilitate that group. I participate, but they're the ones that facilitate that group. So what we'll do now is, and I'll let you know who they are. We have, first, I'll introduce our academic instructional officers, and they'll introduce the schools that they're responsible for. And then they will, since they share some, many of the goals, they'll sort of take turns sharing their SMART goals with you. So the, what I'll do is list the three of them and then ask them to sort of do their thing. They kind of know what to do already. So Angela Stockman is an academic construction, instructional officer. She's, many of you, you know who she is. She worked in our district for many years. She was a principal at Woodrow, and she worked at Columbia before Columbia closed. We worked at Roosevelt Magnet School together. I respected her because she was very focused on improving student learning and student growth. So we have Angie. We have Dr. Bell, and he'll tell you a little bit about where he's from. And we also have Ravanda Johnson, who is no stranger to our district. So team, where are you? Can you come up and, can you come up and share some, introduce yourself quickly and share some of your goals?
Good evening. As she said, I'm Angela Stockman, and I'm the academic officer for Charter Oak, Franklin, Harrison, Hines, Keller, Northmore, Thomas Jefferson, Valeska, Woodyer, and Woodrow Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jerry Bell, and I have the honor and privilege of working with the principals from the following schools. Calvin Coolidge Middle School, Glen Oak Community Learning Center, Robert A. Jamison School, Lindberg Middle School, Mark Beals Middle School, Roland Acres Middle School, Roosevelt Magnet Middle School, Sterling Middle School, the Unstupend Middle School, and Washington Gifted Middle School.
I'm Ravanda Johnson, and I have the privilege of working with Lincoln K-8, Treewind K-8, Manuel Academy, Peoria High School, Richwoods High School, Knoxville Center for Student Success, and Woodrow Career and Technical Center. I'll start off. Each one of us, we share the same goals. So we're going to divide our goals up. Each one of us are going to talk about two. And the first thing we focus on is academic achievement. Student growth is measured for principals as well as teachers. Right now, our district uses NWA to measure the student growth. So we focus on that with our teachers. We have asked them to go ahead and identify those students who are at the Tier Two and Tier Three group, right at the beginning of school, so that we can get those interventions in place. We start targeting those kids right on. We're going to start NWA testing very soon, and once we get that testing, we'll have another set of data to see those kids, to make sure we give intentional interventions for those. We partner very closely with the Curriculum Department in order to make sure that we're meeting the academic achievement goals that we've set for ourselves in each of our cohorts and with each of our principals.
Goals three and four have to do with attendance and referrals and suspensions. We will collect data weekly. We will review those with our principals to either celebrate reaching our goals or to work with them and give them resources and solutions to help them reach their goals.
And lastly, our last two goals are very simple. We do what we call progress monitoring, in which we give feedback to the principals weekly. And lastly, we want to make sure that we have active PO, not PLCs, PTOs in all of our schools. Thank you. And as Dr. Karat said, I'm kind of new to the area. I think this is my third week here from Arkansas, and I feel right at home. Thank you.
They understand as leaders, our role primarily is to provide support for our team and also to progress monitor. So we're going to do that. Philosophically, we're all on the same page. So I appreciate you, team. So Mr. Rickbert, what do you have to, what would you like to say?
Well, Mrs. Allen?
Mrs. Allen.
Okay. I am the legal officer at District 150, and because I'm the only legal officer, I can also claim to be the chief legal officer.
You are.
And my job is pretty broad. I, broadly stated, I see my job as being to protect the legal rights and interests of the school district, to protect the resources of the school district, to make sure that they are available for our academic programs. So it is incredibly diverse position and one that requires me to shift gears from minute to minute every day. My goals are, I am really proud to say that I think in the first year that I've been here, we were able to reduce legal fees by nearly three hundred thousand dollars, outside legal fees. And among my goals for last year, I have, for next year rather, for this year, I have, I'm going to gulp a little bit when I say this, accepted the challenge to try to reduce the outside legal fees by another two hundred thousand dollars. And I'm going to do that in part by taking over some of the roles that we have traditionally paid outside counsel. And so I will be in a very active role in expulsion matters and acting as a hearing officer and in representing the district's position in cases where the students are represented by lawyers. And I'm also going to be working with our labor unions in an attempt to try to reduce labor grievances by twenty percent over the course of the next year. And hopefully, we'll be doing that by means of some education-type things where I will go out and give talks to various groups of our employees. And I'm going to try to, again, protect our district by making sure that our insurance coverages are adequate and that we have good arrangements that provide us the greatest protection from outside legal fees. So that's, those are basically my goals.
Thank you very much. The next individual that I would like to introduce to you, who's in my cabinet, the small one, she's the Director of Employee Services, Mrs. Jerry Hammer.
Hi. I am over payroll, HR, work comp, and employee insurance. My goals for this year are to have customer service for visitors and all the employees, to provide everybody what they need so they can go do their jobs, what they were hired to do. Recruiting well-qualified staff for our open positions. Nurture a positive climate and culture in the district to move forward to where we should be. Have all job descriptions updated and have job descriptions that we don't even have, but we have jobs for. Keep developing paperless procedures and keep moving forward and trying to go paperless and be accountable for that and save money at the same time.
Thank you. The Director of Student Affairs is also a member of my cabinet, Shannon Marlin. What are your goals, Ms. Marlin?
Okay. So with discipline in the district, I'm going to work on monitoring the discipline data and having discussions with the AIOs to reduce referrals and suspensions by twenty percent. I will weekly update the superintendent on district data and discipline with academics, attendance, and enrollment. Also, I'm going to have weekly discussions with the AIOs regarding the number of days students have been suspended in hopes, we're going to have talks that center around the interventions being put into place when the students return to help them be more successful. And then also work on ensuring all students who are expelled with option to attend Woodrow Safe Schools, that they make contact and they enroll when space is available.
Thank you very much. And the last one, the seventh person, is Mr. Chris Copeland, and he is the Director of Communications and Community Engagement. Mr. C.
Good evening. This year, we're really excited. I'm working with Mrs. Jenkins, as well as Barbara Jewell. She's a part-time communications specialist. And our Secretary, Tamika Atkinson. So as a team, we're really focused this year on restarting our Adopt a School program. So if anybody is out there wanting to partner with one of our schools, please let us know. Our goal is to get one Adopt a School partner for every school in the district this year. So we'll be busy with that. Working with our PTOs, we currently have eight schools without PTOs, so we're working to try to get some of those launched, along with the AIOs, to have that as a support for our schools as well. We'll be working with our webmasters and key communicators in the district and increasing that dialogue by having quarterly meetings to support our schools so that they can communicate effectively with our parents. We're also excited, this year, we'll be launching a district app here in the next few weeks, actually. Hopefully, we'll be launching that, and we'll be, with that, having our tip line on the web and through the app so that folks can communicate with the board, but also with our schools and departments to let them know suggestions and recommendations. Finally, two things. Parent University, again, that starts this Thursday, so we're excited to kick off right at the beginning of the year with the help of Sterling Middle School. Have a lot of exciting workshops planned for that, and we're trying to increase attendance for Parent University this year. And lastly, really working with Mrs. Jenkins on the team, working to revitalize our fine arts programs within the schools. I'm excited to say, with the help of the PFT, our union leaders, and community volunteers, we actually had our first fine arts meeting today and working on trying to see what we can do to expand fine arts again in the district.
Thank you, Mr. C. And finally, I would like to, our Chief Curriculum Instructor, I mean, Chief Curriculum and Instruction Officer, Susan Gershnic, and our Chief Financial Officer, Mark Wilcoxen, both of them are also part of my cabinet, and they'll finish out, they'll introduce themselves and then introduce their staff to you.
Right. The Curriculum Department does have the NWEA goals, just like the AIOs do, so we're all in alignment there. So that's growth, hitting growth targets this year for all of our students. I'm also charged with working on a robust RTI system to get the right interventions in place for students and to make sure we're in good alignment with our curriculum. And also, we're going to be doing a curriculum audit this year. You'll hear fiscal responsibility over and over again from our team as well. First, I'd like to introduce you to Shemika Sykes Salvador. And she also has an NWEA reading goal. She's going to be working on the Reading Buddies Program. Well, stand up, make sure they see you, because we need lots of volunteers. She's also going to work on the social studies four-quarter plans for the high school. She also has a fiscal goal of reducing all our contracts as well, as best we can. And then the goal of being present and visible in our schools to help our teachers to be the best that they can be. Thank you, Shemika. Next, we have Susan Govine. Susan also has an NWEA math goal. She's our math coordinator. She also has the goal of being present and visible and providing feedback to classroom teachers to help them be the best that they can be. She also is working on the District Mathematics Curriculum Guide to ensure that it has full implementation across the district. And she's going to work on the science four-quarter plans this year as well with the new science standards that are out. And also has a fiscal goal, too. Thank you. Chetay Green is not here. She's our Title One Director. She has, her goals are centered around accountability for compliance, staying on top of all the regulations for Title One, and then being present and visible and providing feedback to schools as well. Last, on the team, Maureen Langhoff. Maureen is the Director of Special Education. She also has NWEA score goals. She's also going to work on special education student suspensions past ten days to get them to reflect more of the state's average. She's also going to monitor the flash curriculum at Fidelity and maintain least restrictive environment data within the three percent of what the state targets are for educational environments. And she's also going to be present and visible, providing feedback to schools. Thank you.
The Chief Financial Officer. Where's Mr. W? Wilcoxen.
Usually, I'm Mr. W. It's the first time I've heard the superintendent say Wilcoxen. I'm Mark Wilcoxen. I'm the Chief Financial Officer. I view my responsibilities in two ways. First, to assure that the district receives and enhances all the revenue that's due to the district and that we are accountable and that we spend our dollars wisely and appropriately. So from thirty thousand... appropriately. So, from 30,000 feet, that's kind of my responsibilities. My two SMART goals that I would like to mention, after the adoption of the 2016 budget, we would like to implement a budget planning process for 2017 that will result in an annual budget, a balanced budget in the education fund where our revenues equal or exceed our expenditures. And for buildings, we want to develop a funding source to complete projects to reduce all of our Category A health, life, safety violations by half by the start of the next school year. I have six direct reports. I think we'll do ours a little bit differently than Susan did. They're all talented and hard-working individuals, and not only that, but they're a joy to work with, and I appreciate everything they do. I'll introduce them, and then individually, I'll tell you their goals. Comptroller Mike McKenzie, Director of Budget and Compliance, Carla Eamon, Director of Buildings and Grounds, Dave Myers, School Safety Director Greg Collins, Transportation Director Josh Collins, and they're not brothers, they're sitting next to each other, but you can tell they're not related, and Technology Director Michelle Seifel. So, each one will tell you their two SMART goals.
I'm Mike McKenzie. I'm the comptroller of the district, which basically makes me in charge of financial reporting and internal controls and other accounting-type of things. I'm also in charge of food service. My goals this year, you know, surround around financial reporting on time, and the new goal, or the big goal this year is to work with the new committees, to the budget committees, to balance the budget by fiscal 2017. I'll be chairing the, or co-chairing the staffing committee this year.
Hello, I'm Carla Eamon, Director of Budgets and Compliance, and a couple of my goals for the year, to co-chair the program group for the FY17 Budget Reduction Committee with the Chief Curriculum Officer and hoping to gather a couple of more individuals to be on that committee with us. And then also to meet with ISBE and coordinate with the Director of Technology on the district plan for school flexibility. My goal there is I'm trying to decrease the amount that we're spending on the federal TRS currently within Title I and Title II budgets.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Seifel. I'm the Director of Technology. A couple of my goals this year are to provide easier and more robust access to video and remote conferencing capabilities to allow the staff to reduce travel and increase collaboration. I'm also looking to configure along those same lines, central stable location facility and technology services for professional development rooms to increase and improve staff training opportunities at the district.
Hi, I'm David Myers, Director of Buildings and Grounds. A couple of my goals are streamlining our budgets in our department to reduce unnecessary spending, and I also want to improve our facilities, continue to improve our facilities through our mechanical preventive maintenance program, which will also reduce spending as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Greg Collins, School Safety. I'm in charge of the safety of every student, staff, and visitor that comes on District 150 grounds. My two SMART goals, number one is to better communicate the district's policy for bullying and harassment to students, staff, and parents to increase their awareness and reduce the number of incidents in these schools. I'd like to do this by training all campus security officers to investigate investigative procedures. That's something new that we went to a school here recently. Increase the number of bullying presentations at the primary and middle school level. Think this is important because in the past, we've done it primarily in the high schools. My second goal is to implement additional training for campus security officers to fit the needs of the community and the school. And I'd like to do a couple different things. Teach sign language or have taught sign language for campus security officers, and also I see a big need to have basic Spanish for our campus security officers also.
Hello, I'm Josh Collins, Director of Transportation. Two SMART goals that I want to talk about. First thing we want to do is to hire enough drivers to reduce the usage of first student down to the minimum, which is 10, by March 2016. The next thing I want to talk about is I would like to increase our bus bulletin usage from 10% right now to 20%. Bus Bulletin is our parent alert system. With Bus Bulletin, we can quickly notify parents and schools of late buses, substitute buses, or substitute drivers. We also use this system to notify schools and administrators of emergencies.
So, thank you very, very much. What do you think, audience? What I like about our district, this team, and also our staff in buildings, everyone understands the sense of urgency, and we're all servant leaders. They're professional learners, and I like that. So, now, guys, you know what? Now, this was the easy part. Now, the work has begun, right, for the entire year, and we're up to the challenge. So, Madam President? Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for this topic?
It's, go ahead, please. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. It's a pleasure meeting many of you. Listening to the goals, there is no way that we, as a board, are going to remember all of your goals. So, what I am going to ask you to do, if it's okay with the superintendent, that if we could have a copy of your goals so that we have something to refer back to and that go-to person when we need a specific question answered or something like that, if that would be okay?
Absolutely. We'd be happy to do that. I have some of those, and I know the Chief Curriculum, and we'll get that to you. They have those.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Who else?
Well, my curiosity is up. There are a few other people that was sitting in the pit there, as we call it, the pit, and I was just wondering if we can know who they are as well.
Hello, my name is Michael Worley. I'm the Assistant Director of Transportation. I oversee the front office, which is all the drivers and the monitors, supervisors.
Saskia Courtney, Special Education Supervisor, Transportation.
Sarah Burrell, General Education Supervisor for Transportation.
Hi, I'm Mina Alexander, Operations Manager of Transportation.
Hello, John Henry, Assistant Director of Transportation, in charge of Fleet Services and Vehicle Maintenance.
Thank you very much.
Rich Gould, Assistant Director of Security.
Ms. Jackson, I had something, I want to add something.
Yes, I did. Thank you. I just want to say I really appreciate what Dr. Karat has done in pulling this team together. Just looking at them, they look excited, and I know they all have a lot of work to do, and I don't think any one of us want to stop you. We want to see you grow and grow, and with you growing and growing, our children are going to grow. And that's what we're all about, is the children. So, thank you so much for coming to the rescue.
Ms. Floyd?
I would just say, first of all, I've gotten to know a number of people on the staff, and I'm really impressed with professionalism and the dedication and the time that's spent well above and beyond normal hours in many cases and people available on a 24/7 basis. And that takes something more than just a paycheck. That's something that you really have a passion for. So, I really salute you for that, number one. Number two is, we had an early meeting with Dr. Karat. I think she'd been in the job about 48 hours, and I was really thoroughly impressed with the amount of time and effort she had put into thinking through pretty significant organizational structure issues, reporting relationships, and how that was going to get staffed. And in the time that she's been involved here, I am really impressed and thankful for her time and energy that she's put into this because this was a significant task in a very short timeframe, and from a management and leadership standpoint, that is very impressive, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Next on the agenda is the proposed expenditures over $2,500. Your mic, my mic? Oh, yeah, that's awesome. Can you hear me now? Okay, expenditures over $2,500. Mr. Wilcoxon. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Wilcoxon on the expenditures over $2,500? No?
Report of request under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such request.
Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting on August 10th, we've received three new Freedom of Information Act requests, and of these, actually, all of them were filled. We do have one pending. There was one pending request noted on August 10th, and this request is still pending. So, we've received 77 requests for this calendar year for a total of $237.75.
Thank you. FY16 budget presentation. Mr. Wilcoxon.
We've been working on this budget basically since November of last fall. We've started making presentations to the board in March. The board discussed this budget in April. We brought another report back to the May meeting, and we brought another report back to the July meeting. So, it's really a pleasure for the three of us to actually present the fiscal year 2016 budget to the board. Figure out technology here. All right. With me today is Carla Eamon and Mike McKenzie, who you met earlier. Overview of today's agenda, we're going to talk about, recap some budget issues briefly. We're going to review the budget development process that I just mentioned. We're going to discuss the planning assumptions that are included in this budget, and then we're going to present the actual budget. There are two overarching goals in the development of this budget. First, we want to work to bring our expenditures more in line with the financial resources that are provided to the district, and our two main revenue sources are general state aid from the state of Illinois and local property taxes. We also, in developing this budget as much as possible, wanted to protect direct classroom instruction and student support services, activities that we do that actually touch the lives of students. Just to recap again, this, I think this slide illustrates very well how the district got into the position that we're in. If you look at the expenditure and revenue trends over the last several years, our revenues, on average, have been decreasing almost 2% per year, while expenditures are increasing about 2.1% per year, which is just a little bit over the rate of inflation. So, over time, what's happened is, we've talked about this as being a revenue problem more than an expenditure problem. Our expenditures really have increased about the rate of inflation, but as we'll talk a little bit more, our revenues have been really challenging lately. Again, this is something we've presented earlier, but I just want to recap this. Our two largest funding sources are property taxes, which account for 40% of our revenue, and as we've talked earlier, the last several years, we've had decreases in our equalized assessed valuation, although the 2014 EAV did increase a little bit. The second-largest source of revenue for the school district is general state aid, which accounts for 27% of our revenue. And again, we've had continuing prorations at the state level of general state aid because appropriations haven't been sufficient to fund the general state aid formula. This is an illustration of our property tax extensions. Again, you can see for the last six years or so, we have had fairly level tax extensions, and those are even as they are because we have some unlimited tax rates. Our EAV has actually dropped over this period of time other than 2014. And we've talked about this, too. This is the historical general state aid, and again, in 2011, the state fully funded the general state aid formula. There was no proration, but that has steadily decreased since 2011, dropping to 95%, 89%, 88%. And in 2015, we had the 2.25 reduction mid-year in our general state aid, so it was only funded at 87.2%. We talked a little bit about expenditure challenges, and the largest category of expenditure for the district is salaries and benefits. And even within this category, you can see that one of the challenges that we're facing is the increase in benefits. Salaries have been fairly flat over this period of time, but employee benefit costs are one of the drivers of our expenditures. And just to recap, the development process this year, we started in November. We formed two groups that looked at, and you've heard this earlier, one group focused on programs within the district, the other group focused on staffing and looking at some metrics of ways to look at staffing per student and per school and those kinds of things. In March, we brought our first list of budget reduction options to the board. In April, the board held a meeting that spent a significant amount of time discussing those reduction options. We took the board's counsel, came back in May with an amended set of budget recommendations to the May meeting. And in July, just last month, we brought what we are using to support the development of this budget, the budget recommendations that we presented to the board at the July meeting. And again, next steps, we're at the August meeting now. We're making the initial presentation of the board. We will publish this on the district website for 30 days. We will have notice in the local paper that it is available for inspection. At the September meeting, we'll ask the board to approve this budget. And in October, we'll start all over again with the 2017 budget development with the goal to have more of these decisions made by March rather than the July timeframe. And just to recap where we were with the amended budget, education fund, our annual deficit, that's the spending in one year. We spent $10.3 million more than we brought in. We ended fiscal year, or we planned to end fiscal year 2015 with a 5.9 negative fund balance. And I say we planned to do that because we're in the middle of having our audit right now, so we won't know our actual year-end fund balance until the audit is completed. Our total operating funds in 2015, we spent $13.6 million more than we brought in, and our ending fund balance for those four operating funds is 5.9 million. So, again, some of the challenges- So again, some of the challenges that we faced in developing the budget that we'll present shortly, most local, state, and federal revenue sources are stagnant at best, while expenditures are increasing. The temporary state income tax was not extended. Salary and benefits continue to increase due to contractual agreements and other reasons, and these are the largest district expense category. And budget pressures require that staffing levels continue to be reviewed, prioritized, and adjusted. This is a little hard to read, but this is a, we've presented this to you before. This is, basically, we have financial accounting, but we also have to deal with cash, and we need cash to pay bills. Based on our historical pattern of revenues and expenditures, right now, it looks like we would have a challenge in May of 2016, when we may actually go into a negative cash position. This, again, depends on when we receive reimbursements. When our property taxes come in, as you can see in June, we're projecting our cash balance to go up to 17 million, and that's when we typically receive our initial property tax payment. So we monitor this constantly, but this is one of the challenges that we could face in the current fiscal year. Yes?
Do those projections include the 35 million in working cash, or is...
Yes.
So even with the 35 million in working cash, we could be in the negative?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So just to scare everybody, if, based on the current budget, '15 budget, if revenue patterns contend at, continue at a minus 1.9% per year, and expenditures continue at the historical pace over the last several years at 1, or 2.1% per year, this is what will look like in fiscal year 2018. Our operating fund deficit would grow from 13.6 million to 32.1 million. And we're confident this won't be the case, but without action, this is what could happen. And this is something we presented to you, I believe, at the last board meeting, operating fund projections, giving some of the assumptions that we've built into this budget. And that would be property taxes increasing at 1% per year, general state aid prorated at 92% in '16, which is what the appropriation is right now, and the allocation by the State Board of Education, and then increase 1% annually. All other revenues stay the same. Salary increases at 1% per year. Benefits increase at 2.1% per year. All other expenses staying the same. And then projected, or possible, budget reductions in the out-years to make this budget work. So we're looking at operating fund budget reductions of 4.5 million in '17, and then we, then it would drop down in years after that. So now getting to the 2016 budget. Again, the superintendent's cabinet worked on this. We involved staff from curriculum, finance, technology, student services, building and maintenance, transportation, research, and security. We focused on two areas, again, programmatic and staffing requirements. It was a collaborative process among the superintendent's cabinet in developing and vetting the initial recommendations that we presented to you from March to July. On the revenue side, we're making assumption that we will have a 1% increase in EAV that will drive a 1% increase in our property taxes, property tax revenue. Again, general state aid funded at 92%. Corporate personal property replacement tax, our best estimate is that that will increase by 3.9%. And some funding decreases in the state categoricals. I think the state's going to have to make some decisions, and it seems like they're willing to put more money into state aid, and it might be at the expense of some of the categoricals. Expenditures, staffing positions adjusted to lower levels. In the budget we're presenting to you, there are 102 fewer positions in fiscal year '16 than in fiscal year '15. And then we will also have some program budget decreases. The results of this budget, there will be some larger class sizes. Again, we're having, there will be fewer district employees. There are 102 less positions, but there were actually very few layoffs. A lot of those positions are not being filled, that were vacated by retirements and resignations. There will likely be less professional development opportunities for teaching staff, particularly traveling to professional development opportunities. Some decreases in student support services, fewer new textbooks and replacement, increase in deferred maintenance of the district's facilities, and a decrease in administrative costs. I'm going to let Carla talk a little bit about some of the program decisions.
After all of the negatives and the things that we are losing out on, I wanted to point out many of the positives that are still occurring. The board had made it clear that we really did want to protect the K-1 class sizes. So what we did is we decreased some of the professional development, and we're utilizing Title II class size reduction funds in order to keep those class sizes at a really, really good size right now. We're happy with that. We're continuing to have the teacher aides to support the special ed students. We're continuing to encourage the independent student growth through our compass licenses, accelerated reader programs, and then continuing with our AP, Advanced Placement, and our IB programs to support that rigor in the curriculum. And then also, we are continuing to support that career tech piece that is so important to us through Woodruff Career Tech, those Paxton Labs that we've invested a lot of time and energy in and that our students are utilizing fully. And then the career pathway training for involved staff. We do have a couple of special grants for that, so we will continue to do training in that area. In the student support area, we will continue to promote the family involvement through our parent universities and our College Bound program. We want to put a lot of focus on our social emotional supports for all students this year, so we will be continuing with Y-TRY and expanding in the BIST area. We will continue the Woodruff Safe School for our alternative school. We only made slight cuts to the Family Core program. I believe it came in at 20% cut there. And then also continue our district middle school level counselors. Then for professional development, we want to continue to have the inclusive environment. We felt we needed to very much support the ULT teams, the universal leadership teams in each school. And then instead of as much travel or going to other locations, especially out of state, having more onsite and looking at more cohort teacher training. And then focus on more in-state professional development for key areas that directly impact student achievement, and this could mean travel within the state of Illinois, but that we need to do it on a limited and very focused, in a focused nature. And we'll let Mark discuss this slide a little bit more in depth.
You'll let me?
Yes, I will let you.
Ensuring campus, or I'm sorry, ensuring safety, a safe learning environment. Again, this was a lengthy discussion we had with the board. This budget includes an increase in the number of campus safety officers. We also had several discussions about continuing the Elite Youth Outreach Program, and it will be at Lincoln and Harrison this year. And it's, we work cooperatively with Elite to increase their fundraising activities to support the program at Harrison. And we're also working on the intergovernmental agreement with the Peoria Police Department to have an officer in the three, a police officer in each of the three high schools. So this is a little bit hard to read, but this is a summary of the operating funds, education fund, operation and maintenance fund, transportation, and IMRF Social Security. And I think each of the board members has a copy of this, which may be easier to read from the hard copy. But let's go to the next slide. And we'll compare where we were last year to where we are this year. In the 2015, we had an education fund deficit of 10.3 million, and this budget has reduced to 4.3 million, so it's changed to the better of $6 million. Operation and maintenance, we made a little progress in the budget there, and there's still some challenges remaining in the operation and maintenance fund. Transportation fund shows a deficit of, an increase in the deficit of $656,000, but the majority, well, more than the majority of that is attributable to the purchase of the 30 buses that we bought for $900,000. It's now showing up as a 2016 expenditure. And then, again, those have a payback of between four and five years, so that was a large expenditure that we did discuss with the board. IMRF and Social Security has a deficit, but that, again, IMRF Social Security has an unlimited tax rate, so that's just a matter of us adjusting our tax levy to take care of that. Now, in operating funds, and truly, the focus so far has been on our operating budget because that's where the majority of our expenditures take place. So these are presented for your information as part of the budget. So next steps, again, the budget will be posted to the district's website tomorrow. We will issue a public notice that it's available for public inspection, and it will also be, a hard copy will be at the front desk. It'll be displayed for 30 days. Budget hearing will be held at the September 28th meeting, and then after that, the board will be asked to adopt the 2016 budget. So we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Could you turn the lights back?
Mr. Chloe?
Could we turn the lights back on? I think it'd be helpful to be able to see what we're doing here. Okay, a couple of questions. Just to make the point again, I seem to be able to make this point regularly, and that is, we've lost $19.6 million in state aid, and we're showing a cumulative deficit over that period of time of, what, about $16 million, something like that? Something on that order. Well, the point, the point of my comment here is that the state of Illinois continues to shirk its responsibilities to fund education, and their continued irresponsible actions in Springfield ought to be the subject of citizen concern and frankly, efforts to get them to understand that this is not a way to run a state or a school system when we have to constantly expect that they're going to do what they promised to do, and then they fail to do that. So that's my point on that. Number two is, in the process of putting together the next year's budget, I think it would be very helpful if we do some things to understand the demographic trends that we're going to see in our district over the next five or 10 years as a way of trying to understand where that might impact us. I think the assumption is a constant population level here, and I don't know if that's a valid assumption or not. I don't think we've had huge changes in the number of students over time, but that certainly is something of help. A third thing is, are we matching the days payable with the days receivable? Are we, are we in pretty good shape on that in terms of cash flow?
I mean, yes and no. I mean, we, the school district cash flow is front-heavy. You get a lot of property taxes at the very beginning. You get certain things like general state aid over 22 months, so it's, you know, very complicated, like most industries. But, but overall, yes. I mean, we know, it's just, it's just timing of it all.
I guess the point is, it's, you don't see it from a professional standpoint as grossly out of balance here in terms of we're paying a lot more out than we receive in terms of days at certain points of the year, other than because of the tax effect when we get paid.
Yeah, and in fact, we're just, I mean, we're spending more money than, you know, so over time, it's not sustainable, but, I mean, we are overspending, so we are spending more cash than we bring in, obviously, but it's not out of whack over, more so than that. It is mostly a timing thing.
Okay. And as I understand it, the Elite program at Harrison is based on external fundraising, that this district is not funding that, that there have been outside sources that have funded that activity there. Is that correct?
Correct. They're getting some grant funding and some private donations to fund the Harrison program. I will add one comment, if I could, about the general state aid. The other trend that's happening is with the decrease in EAV, the state real, the theory behind general state aid is they will make up differences in losses of local property tax wealth. So when you're having a level general revenue fund, I'm saying general state aid appropriation, it's not really making up for your loss in the EAV either, so it's kind of a double whammy.
Yeah. Well, and then one thing to conclude is, I know this is difficult, and this is painful, and I, in my, course of my professional career, I've worked for a couple of organizations that had to do very, very difficult things along these lines. It is no fun for anybody. It is painful, and it impacts you in a way that's not just financially but emotionally. And I would encourage you to not be discouraged, those of you that have to do this. It's what you have to do, and I appreciate that, and I hope the board understands how difficult these things are on a staff and all the people that have to live with these decisions. We don't take them lightly, and you've been dealing with this very professionally, and I thank you for that, and I appreciate your efforts in that area. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Robin Butler?
Yes, from Mrs. Eamon. You mentioned that the classroom sizes, of these that are good, you're okay with what they are. What does that look like?
Right now, what I was seeing for the K-1, and again, I haven't been in all buildings or all around the district, but I was seeing a lot of 18 sizes, and so it's come in very nicely, and that's with the use of eight additional teachers. It was, I think, two first grade teachers and six kindergarten teachers.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Adler, you had something?
I was just going to ask about, from an enrollment standpoint, if there was, I guess, somebody alluded to, we haven't seen any massive drops in enrollment, and I know that the superintendent kind of reports out on where we're at every week. It looked kind of low to me. Historically, at this time of year, is that about what we would expect to see, or...
Actually, I do have those numbers in front of me for three years, 2013, 14, and 15, and we're about 444 students short. The enrollment, as of today, it's 12,824 students, and last year around that time, it was about And 2013, it was 13,354. We do anticipate a spike, especially after Labor Day.
Okay, thank you.
But currently, there is about, we're about 400 students lower than last year around this time.
Any other questions or comments on the budget?
I have a couple of questions. You know, I have these weird questions because I heard Ms. Wifmar asked you if this, what you were presenting as far as a deficit included the working cash fund. And, did I hear that correctly? No?
I just asked in May, when, when it showed the point in May where we could be in a deficit for cash flow, if that included the working cash.
For cash flow?
For cash flow, not the budget deficit, but the cash flow where we didn't have enough there for the cash flow. That's what I was asking.
And because I know the working cash fund was there to draw from while we're waiting for our allotments that come from the state and also come from the VAB. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, so the, there's approximately a 38, 37, 38 million dollars in the working cash fund, right?
Correct. And in May 2016 is when, even with that cash, is when we would go into a negative cash position.
Providing we did not get our allotments on time. Is that correct?
If we receive the allotments in the same schedule that we have historically, that's when, May 16 is when we would be in a negative cash position, even with the working cash fund.
Okay, because...
Which begs the question, how do we deal with that, with tax anticipation, tax anticipation or short-term borrowings or something?
That's the way we've done it before, teacher orders, tax anticipation, those kinds of things, before we built the working cash fund. That's what, that's how we did it. But eventually, I know, short of maybe 8% to 10% that comes from the state, we eventually got our allotments and were able to replenish that.
Yeah, it would be very short term because we would anticipate getting property tax receipts the next month.
the next month.
Mr. Adler?
I would just say that, I guess, that kind of puts the point on the emphasis for next year's budget planning, is that dipping down that low, that one time, we want to ensure that we're not coming back to that same low point and running up to that short-term problem, because it'll become a long-term one.
I have one other question.
Mr. Chloe?
Just one other question. Does this include any potential health, life, safety bonds?
It does not. There's one other thing I should mention. When we developed this budget, in '15, when the governor made the reduction in general state aid of the 2.25%, they also made an appropriation of hold harmless money. This budget does not include any of the hold harmless money because at this point, we don't know how that will be appropriated, but that is another possible revenue source to the district once, that's not included in here. So it's, I think at the last meeting, Mr. Chloe, you talked about, you know, we need to be conservative because we don't know if the state's going, will do mid-year budget reductions again, so there is, there is some money that's still on the table that isn't included in this budget, and it's depending on what the state does with their hold harmless allocation.
Okay, thank you.
Is that even if, even if we are not considered, we were under the hold harmless for a number of years, and we're not considered...
Well, we did receive money from that appropriation last year, and it was, it was a significant amount. It was about $800,000.
Yes, I remember.
So, and again, the state, we don't know how they're going to allocate that money. The only thing the state's put in their system so far is the general state aid payments, so we will update you when we know something about that.
Okay. Reverend Butler?
Again, just going back to the working cash fund, so that amount of money has been included to offset spending during the coming school year. And when you get the money in June, that's going to replenish that?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear on that because those of you who were on the board when we voted for that fund, we said that it was always to be replenished and put back. We were never to spend it out and not be able to get the money back, so...
Yeah, we do not anticipate transferring money out of that fund, but we do borrow out of that fund and then repay it.
The whole reason for setting that up, as you know, was so that we would have, would not have to borrow from other people or take out bonds and that. We would borrow from ourselves and then pay it back, right?
But as I understand it, that working cash fund was financed by bonds.
Initially.
It's not a freebie, and it wasn't from our own cash flow. We pay interest on that borrowing.
Which is why we don't do it.
Any other questions for Finance Department?
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Just, real quickly, I do want to say thank you to that finance team because I'm sure this has been a very frustrating time for them. There have been times when we have looked at them and said, nope, we're not going to do that, and they come back to us for more suggestions, and we just sort of stare at them and expect them to come up with it out of the air. So, I think you guys did a great job this year. We still have some difficulties ahead. I think starting early helped a lot. I think we were more involved in the budget process this year than we've ever been, and I think we will be even more so this year. So, I appreciate the changes you made to that process, and I think it's going to work for us. Thank you.
Madam President, also, I would like to thank you for those of us that came here just doing our checkbooks and thinking we know something a lot about the budget. We don't, but it's been simple enough where I'm beginning to really understand it, and I appreciate that you're putting it in language that we can all understand that. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Chloe?
Yes, Madam President, the consent agenda this evening includes item number one, gifts to the school district this meeting, $250, year-to-date, $4,450. Proposed actions, the following donations be accepted and letters of appreciation sent to the donor. Freddie the Frog series valued at $500 by Kevin and Ginger Benz to the Glen Oak Primary School and Mrs. Shirock's class. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, the Human Resources report, the proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee. Item number four, payment for travel. Item number five, approval of purchasing policy update. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve and adopt the revised Board of Education purchasing policy. Revised policy will clarify and improve the district's purchasing procedures to assure that appropriate financial obligations are brought to the board for approval before financial commitments are incurred. Item number six, approval of separation agreement, Renee McKinnon. Proposed action is that the Board of Education of the City of Peoria School District 150 approve the attached separation agreement with Felicia Renee McKinnon dated August 10, 2015. Item number seven, memorandum of understanding, local number 780, 2015, 2016, Peoria High School. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the attached memorandum of understanding, revised renewal between the Board of Education, Peoria Public School District Number 150 and the Peoria Federation of Teachers, IFT, AFT, FLCIO, local number 780, as related to Peoria High School. This agreement, revised in the current Peoria High School MOU, which expired on June 30, 2015, will be in effect from July 1, 2015 until June 30, 2016, and reflects the changes required as a result of the conclusion of the 1,003G school improvement grant and its funding. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Are there any items that any board member wished to pull for separate?
Madam President, I'd like to pull the approval of purchasing policy update.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? I'd like a motion and a second on all items with the exception of number five.
So moved.
Madam President, would you...
President. Secretary, would you call the robe?
Do we have any discussion on those? Are there any questions or discussion on those?
Are there any questions or discussion on any of these? Other than number five?
Other than number five, okay.
Do you have something, Mr. Chloe?
No, I just wanted to make sure people had a chance to ask questions.
All right. No questions? Call the robe, please. Mr. Chloe?
Aye.
Mrs. Costin? Come on in. Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilkman?
Aye.
Mr. Adler? Aye.
Mrs. Bublin?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross? Aye. Seven ayes, motion here. A motion and second on number five?
Madam President, I would respectfully move that we remove this from a vote this evening for reasons that I would outline, if you'd care to hear them. If I could, there's a memo that each of you should have received this evening that discusses this. I'll read it to you. This is from the Policy Committee of the Board members, dated today. The Policy Committee met this morning to conduct a final review of the proposed policy 465, Board of Education review and approval of purchases and travel. We also reviewed other existing policies that address related topics, including 4:55, use of credit and procurement cards, and 4:60 purchases. In reviewing all three documents, it was clear they need to be, needed to be aligned and reconciled to eliminate redundant and outdated language. We want to have consistent and concise policy statements, and some of our current policy texts should be restated as the accompanying administrative procedure. Mr. Wilkes-Coxton said his staff has been testing the purchasing approval procedure in Skyward and requested that we make policy 4:65 effective October 1, 2015, in order to have a clean transition to the new approval system. Our goal is to have this policy reconciliation completed for approval at the September 28 board meeting. We also want to make sure our online policy documents are current with the goal of posting any newer revised policy within 24 hours of board approval. Hard copy versions of the board policy book are unreliable and may not have been consistently updated. These books should be discarded and replaced by use of our online documents. Board Member Jackson asked that we include language related to good faith efforts and personnel practices of suppliers and contractors. Board policy 4:60 on purchases, which we can provide attachment to, currently addresses part of this request with references to the Illinois Human Rights Act and compliance with state and federal employment nondiscrimination statutes. Application of the good faith effort standard in our procurement policy raises a number of issues, including the potential administrative burden, how to address issues with single-source suppliers, and its impact on local vendors. We will continue to research how this could be applied in an amended policy or administrative procedure. Therefore, I would ask that we remove this from a vote this evening, and we will bring it back to you with the intention of having it for a vote on the 20th of September. If there are any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them, or Ms. Costin could, so...
I don't have any questions. I want to make sure that we include contractors and vendors, because that's two separate And we're required by law to make sure that all of our contractors and vendors follow the EEO guidelines, and I want to make sure we do that. I'm not sure what you've done in the past. It doesn't seem like there's been a process to do that, but I guess, in my mind, I don't see this as administrative burden. I see it as doing something upfront to make sure we don't have any problems later on. And as a relation to sole source, sole source suppliers and vendors, as long as that company can, our vendor can prove that they are sole source, they really are sole source, we don't have to make that requirement on them. It's those ones that we can get supplies and other things from other places, but the law covers sole source, and that means that if they can prove that they are sole source, we don't have to put that requirement on them. But I want to make sure those that aren't sole source are doing what they should be doing to hire minorities and females in their workforce, and we're required to do that anyway, if we're getting federal, state dollars or taxpayers' money.
I'll get you a copy of 460 because that already has language, it has a paragraph about that in there.
I just want to make sure when we send out bids for anything, that that language is in the bid documents.
I believe it already is in the bid package.
Okay.
Now, if I could also respond to that, the administrative burden portion of this is that I think we have 200 suppliers with which we do more than $25,000 worth of business a year, and a lot of public bodies use $25,000 as a cutoff for that.
Right.
So, the administrative burden of receiving, reviewing, and evaluating purchasing reporting on this issue from 200 suppliers is significant, and I think we need to understand what that might do. The other question would be, if you have a situation where you have a local vendor and an out-of-state vendor who is many times as large, and you say, well, the local vendor who pays taxes into this district is somehow disqualified because of that one consideration, isn't it better that we try to work with them than to disqualify them out of hand? And I guess that would be my point there, is that we need to do this without, without making it so difficult and restrictive for individuals that obviously have good intentions to try and work with the district and do things in an appropriate way.
And I totally understand that. Even if it's a local vendor, we want them to be an equal opportunity employer too. And all we're doing is saying, this is what we, our rules, and this is what we want to happen.
Right.
And we make sure it happens.
And we've done some research on this. We have not been able to find yet any school district that has a good faith effort standard in their purchasing policy. There are some municipalities, many that do that, but school districts do not necessarily have that, and we're trying to find some language that might impact that and a procedure for how you do that, so that it accomplishes what we intend and it also is not burdensome to the supplier or the school district. And the language in our current policy says contract, so as a purchasing, a purchase order is a contract, or a contract with a contractor is a contract. So, our language right now covers all suppliers.
Okay. So we have until October. You will supply, Ms. Jackson, with what the policy that we currently have, and we can, we have until October 1st to revisit this and make sure that it, you know, if school districts are not doing it, perhaps they should be doing it, and we'll just have this time to research it.
And we want to make sure that the three policies are not in conflict with each other, and right now, there's some language that is a little bit overlapping, and we wanted to clean that up before we go any further with it.
Okay. Ms. Costin?
President, I think it's what we're trying to do is to, we want to have this confirmed on board, through the board, so that it can be implemented by October 1st.
Okay.
So, with that, I guess we do not need a motion on that issue if the board is in concurrence with that.
Yeah, I think what your suggestion is a motion to defer or a motion to table until the next meeting.
I would move that this item number five, purchasing policy, be tabled and brought back for the consideration of the board on September 28.
Second, anyone has a second? Okay. Would you please call the robe? Mr. Chloe?
Aye.
Mrs. Costin?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilkman?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bublin?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross? Aye. Seven ayes, motion here. Presentations and suggestions by board members. Mrs. Ross? Reverend Butler?
Yes, I would like to suggest that there be a presentation, and Dr. Karat and I have talked about this on Senate Bill 100. This is going to be a significant discussion for the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee this year. This bill has already passed the House and the Senate. We want to make sure that this district are aligned with that bill as much as possible. There are some things that have been strongly recommended by our council, so I think it bears a public presentation. And then the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee, which will be taking up this bill and other issues of discipline for this district, we will then hold our first meeting in October.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Adler?
Sure. I guess, given the context of the budget conversation we've just had, and we're going to immediately start next year's after we get done with this one, I wanted to, I guess, resurface the idea, and I would pleasantly surprised to hear, not surprised really, but delighted to hear that Dr. Karat and her team have already started an evaluation of various programs and initiatives that we have ongoing in the district. I know in the last year, we've heard a lot from the public about, and from the whole school community really about, you know, maybe in the last decade, we implement a lot of programs, we bring in initiatives to serve a purpose. Lots of times, we don't get enough time to really see them through, see whether or not they're effective. We spend a fair amount of money and incur a lot of change and disruption in our district doing so. And I think as we move towards the fall, towards the budget planning process, and towards some finalization in terms of our strategic planning, it would be a good tool for the board and for the administration to have this, a third-party set of eyes, take a look at the programs that, certainly with district participation, but take a look at the effectiveness and the cost of the different programs that we implement. And I would just offer that as comments, and we'll welcome any other board member or administration comments on that idea.
Any other board members would like to dovetail or have any other comments on that issue?
The only thing I'd like to say is that, and at some point, we may decide that a third party is a good idea, but I think at this point, as a board, we need to give Superintendent Karat and her team an opportunity to get settled in and let them look at the programs we're using and get some information and feedback from the principals, which it sounds like you're going to do. I'd like to see that process first, see what that brings forward. If we still feel like we need to have an outside set of eyes, look at it, but I think it's important, especially since we have so... But I think it's important, especially since we have so many new people on the team, sort of a new vibrancy with the team, that I would like to see what they come up with before we start looking outside.
We also want to keep in mind, there is going to be a board-level fiduciary committee as well, along with the evaluation of the programs and that, that I heard you say you're going to do. We will be, you know, managing, providing that team so that we can also do some evaluation. And perhaps from that, see what's needed, but that's a great idea. Somebody else had, I thought I saw another hand. No?
Just on the reports from...
Reports from board committees? I'm sorry, have you got a report?
Probably, it's not necessarily a report because the school year has just begun, but from the buildings and grounds, perhaps someone could update us on the new athletic fields and things so we know where we're at. I've had some calls from individuals in the community inquiring about various playgrounds and athletic fields. So maybe, Mr. Wilcox, and you can tell us what's in use, what's not, and what's being repaired, or things like that.
Sure. We expressed our disappointment with the contractor and the architectural firm that was overseeing the project. We had a meeting last Tuesday with all parties involved, and we had the athletic director from Peoria High there. The initial plan was to have the Peoria High soccer team practice on those fields and play games. They took their team out to the field, and the fields were unplayable. They hadn't been watered. The sod had contracted where there were gaps between the sod and made it dangerous for players. So they, until further notice, are playing, I think they're practicing at Sterling and playing their games at the stadium site. Not in the stadium, but a field that we've constructed out on that site. So we got assurances from the contractor that they would be watering the fields as they're supposed to. They're filling in the gaps. I haven't been down there for a couple of days, but they refertilized the field, and hopefully, they will be playable soon. But, you know, we're getting fairly into the soccer season now, so it'll be a decision whether we play there at all this year, or just let them rest for the rest of the season and then just start in the spring. So we're hoping to close the project out soon, but there's still work that has to be done to get them up to the standards that they need to be at, and they're not there right now.
So, Mrs. Whitmire?
And I've talked to Mr. Wilcox about this. I also got phone calls for a while about Glen Oak. It looks horrible, and I know it's supposed to have been seeded, but they cut the grass, finally, all the weeds, but that's all it is, is weeds. And so we need to, and I just, I mean, so people understand, and I try and explain to them when, when I get the calls, that it's really not our project, it's the PBC and the contractors. And Peoria High, beyond the soccer fields, around, they're at the corner of North and Nebraska.
Nebraska.
It looks terrible. It's just, it's just plain dirt. So I'm certainly hoping there's going to be some landscaping that's done there, and we just need to stay on those people to make sure that we get it done the way it needs to be done, especially at Peoria High, to get those fields ready. But Glen Oak is just, just horrible.
Yeah. We actually have talked with PBC about that, and they're going to reseed the area, and they will pick up. It's, it's to be decided if the contractor will need to pick up the cost or if the PBC will pay for it. But again, it's kind of one of those things where you want to put a sign up, you know, we're talking about schools. This is not a school District 150 project, you know. But, so, but we're working with the contractors and architects trying to get these things back on track.
I'm glad to hear you say that because I've, you know, again, I've, I've had people talk about it, especially Glen Oak, and I think they expected a long period of time for it. But it makes a school look bad. I mean, a beautiful school just kind of looks bad. That's the first thing they see.
Yeah, it does.
Right.
I guess my question would be, what was wrong with it to be due?
There was a lot of constru, at Glen Oak, there was a, at Glen Oak, there was a lot of construction debris. So they, the contractor was, they scraped off the top several inches of dirt and tried, and they had a machine that actually picked up the rocks to get the rocks off of the playing field. And then they, one of the alternates was to sod the field, but it was too expensive, so they just seeded it. But they didn't, it wasn't watered, and the summer, the seed just didn't take. So they need to reseed it now. It's getting about the right time to, to seed a field, so hopefully, it'll, it'll take this year.
Okay, thank you. I want to take this opportunity to direct your attention to the bulletin boards behind us. These bulletin boards are done by Sterling School, and they really look great, don't you think?
Yes.
In addition to that, the students at Sterling School are pretty proud of what they're doing as well. They wrote, I think they wrote us all letters inviting us to the parent university on Thursday night 27. And they actually spelled some of our names correctly. But they took the time to, to write the letters to us, inviting us and talking about how proud they are of their school. So, I mean, when students get involved in, and they help with all these bulletin boards and that, this, this is just great. They pride in their school. Also wanted to talk a little bit about, just, just briefly, I want to meet with Mr. Dutrow at some point so we can get the agenda together for our first areas of consultation meeting. Okay? Not tonight. But I'll get with Dr. Karat, and we'll get together and get that, that meeting set up so that we can handle that. Is there anything else for the good of the district and the community? Can I entertain a motion to?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
All right. Richard.